Welcome, everyone, to the Eugene City Council Work Session for May 23. We have a couple of very interesting items to discuss today. And the first job is a work session on street repair review.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll turn it over to Kurt and his team to give us a presentation.
Thank you. So, we're actually going to break from tradition here a little bit today, and we have a real brief PowerPoint that goes with this presentation, so we'll...
But no stools in it, right?
Yeah, no, no stools.
I'll leave it when I see it.
It's not in there. Start with a general background for general benefit of the folks listening in on the presentation today. So, in November of 2008, Eugene's voters approved a five-year, $35.9 million bond measure for street preservation. The bond measure conditions included some specific requirements, including a list of specific projects to be completed, the requirement that we employ an outside financial auditor to review the finances year by year, and finally, that there be a street repair review panel formed, a citizen committee, whose purpose was, is to advise the city manager to review the auditor's report and to otherwise document whether the bond proceeds were used in accordance with the bond resolution. The citizens' panel has provided their report each of the years of the measure, and you heard the 2011 report, or 2011 construction report earlier this year. But in addition to preparing those reports, the citizens' panel has worked with staff to recommend additional projects that we were able to accomplish based upon excess bond funds, and more recently, at the city council's request, worked with the staff to develop a recommendation for renewing the bond measure in 2012. So, today's work session is to present that recommendation. The citizens' panel met five times over the spring and winter to develop this recommendation. Take just a second to acknowledge those folks, some of whom are with us today. John Borowski, Janet Calvert, and Sue Walling, I know her in the audience, Howie Bonnet, Mel Damewood, Paul Holbo, Bob Klein, Steve Lee, Ollie Snowden, Clayton Walker, and Gary Wildish were also part of that group. And just take a moment to thank that group for their, what was really a thoughtful, collaborative, and constructive process of getting to what ultimately is this unanimous recommendation Progress on the measure since 2008. So, I think, I think by all accounts, the measure has been viewed as successful. More than two miles of off-street paths have been fixed, together with 54 street projects that will have been completed by the time the measure expires. This work has been documented, of course, in the annual reports from the review panel. Next, Eric. This map shows graphically what has been accomplished over the past 10 years, actually, preceding the bond measure, beginning in 2002, when we had virtually no money to invest in this type of capital, street, improve, repair, and subsequent council adoption of the local gas tax, the voters' approval of the bond measure in 2008, as well as other miscellaneous street repair resources, such as the economic stimulus program, certain amount of grants, and other sources. The, what appear as blue lines on this map, are very dark blue lines, represent the overlay and reconstruct projects. The other yellow shaded areas represent neighborhoods where slurry seals have been completed as part of the program. The public has generally been appreciative. We premiered and showed you earlier this year about a 30-second video clip that was prepared to document these efforts and to serve as a, as an outreach method with the public, and we're going to cue that up and then run it here. I'd like to give my thanks to Janet Calvert for her starring role in this, so we can go ahead and roll this.
As promised, the street maintenance bond measure has fixed major streets throughout the city. I think these improvements have been a great investment for our city. I'd like to thank the voters for approving it. We've been able to really do a good job, and we actually fixed more streets than was initially planned.
Okay, so you might go to the next slide, then, Eric?
We're working on it.
Okay. So, going into this process, you might recall that we had a deferred maintenance backlog that was quickly approaching $200 million. We have seen some significant progress in the decline of the backlog in the past several years in particular, due to a number of factors. One, of course, is the sustained funding towards dealing with it. We've also seen some very favorable bid prices. We've thus had the ability to add projects to the mix that, that help with, in that effort, and we've had some really successful innovative construction methods that have gotten more work done for the same dollars. So, question mark suggests, then, that actually where we go from here is the, is the question of the day. Next slide, shown graphically. The overall street condition is depicted here, and just a brief explanation of this, the green line at the top indicates, on a percentage basis, the number of streets that are in good shape and don't need any type of treatments. So, obviously, the higher that number, the better, and you can see that we stand at about 70 percent of, of the roads that need no treatment at the present time. The yellow line below that is the inventory of the percentage of streets that need an overlay-type treatment. The red dotted line at the bottom is the line indicating the percentage of streets needing to be reconstructed. And so, obviously, you'd like these two lines to be a low number if, if we're heading in the right direction. As you can see, over the past several years, we've made a little bit of progress on the, on the green line. We've essentially held our own, or done a little better on, on the others, and what, what that tells us is that we do need to continue with, with some level of investment if we, if we want that trend to continue. Obviously, we would need to re-up the investment to a higher number if we wanted to see better effects on, on both sets of those lines. But as you can see here, I think what, what is striking to me is that the, the red line, the reconstruct inventory, is below 10 percent, seven to eight percent. Certainly better than we, than we hoped we would be at some point in time. However, the, the counter to that is the, the bond measure ends 2014, and you can see that if, if unchecked, that backlog of reconstruct alone rises up to nearly a quarter of the inventory with, with no action. So, that brings us to the specific proposal. So, again, subsequent to their deliberations, the citizens' panel is recommending sending to the voters a proposal to renew the measure at the $43 million level for five years in the November 2012 election. This would equate to 76 projects, 76 street repair projects that are further described in attachments A and B to your AIS today, and about $2.6 million for bicycle and pedestrian projects. There are many similarities between the 2008 measure and the proposed 2012 measure, and this is a busy slide, but summarizing, the primary purpose of the measure is to fix streets. It utilizes the same average tax rate as the previous measure. It stipulates the same five-year term, the same accountability measures, the same method of prioritizing projects, and also includes a specific dedicated amount for alternative transportation. The differences between the, the two measures are summarized here. While the '08 measure stipulated $350,000 per year for alternative transportation, the current proposal is to establish that at 6 percent of the measure, which would yield about $516,000 per year. Next, the same average tax rate allows for the higher yield at $43 million versus $35.9 million due to increases in the assessed value and increases in the, the tax base, so the same rate gives you a higher number. The, the use of funds set aside for alternative transportation have been expanded, and the discussion at the citizen committee revolved around the acknowledgement that we now have an adopted bike pedestrian master plan. Subsequently concluded that there may be higher alternative mode improvements than fixing the off-street path system, and so this is the intent to build in flexibility around addressing those needs. And finally, there was an expanded secondary criteria added to the mix that I would refer to as a tiebreaker. Given equal projects, then we would give the nod under the prioritization to those that were needing to be delayed due to utility rehab, whether they were on or off bike lanes or transit routes, and higher prioritization for local streets that would serve schools, commercial, or industrial areas. So, the, the discussion today and the next steps from here would then ultimately lead to a follow-up work session sometime late next month, at which time we would bring back a, a more specific proposal that would capture comments and concerns, anything raised here today, and then subsequent to that, we would bring back a proposal with a specific resolution to place this on the November ballot before the summer break, and we would tentatively schedule that for the 9th of July. With that, we'll take questions, discussion, and go from here.
Betty, Andrea, Pauline. Yes? Do you have your hand? For that, I, I think it's going to be really important, Kurt, that, as we talk about this, people will see the number as larger and assume that equates to them paying more, and so I think we're going to have to be clear about what that rate really means, and you want to go over that again for people?
Sure could. Actually, Sue Cutts of George is here, because that, that information is generally laid out in attachment A, and rather than me get this sideways, I might just ask Sue to walk you through that.
Hi. So, yeah, attachment A has all that information, both for the current measure and for the proposed measure. The current measure is still an estimate, because we've got a couple more years to go, but we've updated those figures for the actuals that we've had so far. The, for the current measure, $35.9 million of total proceeds. The average rate over the five years is 65 cents. You can see it goes from 62 to an estimated 68, so the 65 cents is an average over those five years. And looking at the average home, the cost of the average home averages $109 over those five years, but again, it, it goes from 98 to 121, because the, we assume that average home increases in value every year. Same thing happens with the 2012 proposal. We've got the same average tax rate, and so that was a conversation that the, the repair panel had, was they wanted to try and keep the tax rate the same. When you do that, it raises more money, because as Kurt said, the assessed value for all the properties in the city have gone up over that time, and it also results in, over that five-year period, a higher average rate. Although our current expectations or estimates would be from FY14, which is the last year of the current measure, to FY15, the first year of the next measure, the, the cost of the average taxpayer would be about the same, but then it would go up as property values go up over time. So, it's a little bit complicated.
The only other question I had before I called Betty is, I look at the criteria for prioritization, and the only thing that I wanted to, us to think about is roads, even if they're local, that are in severe failure, and how does that, how does that fit into the, into the picture? Because I didn't see on that list a sort of severe failure, like we've been after you about the Seneca Street issue.
Just a quick response to that, that the, the bond measure, by design, is available for capital-type maintenance work as, as defined. The unimproved street network is not, not part of the inventory, not part of the backlog that we're talking about, because they've, they've never been maintained, so therefore are not, not assigned to the bond measure. So, we currently are on, on track to deal with those somewhat minimally through the, the regular operating and maintenance budget of, of our maintenance division, but would not, would be a separate discussion from the, the bond measure, since those would not be projects eligible for funding under this source.
And again, I guess I would just say that I think it's going to be incumbent upon us to really try to talk about that, that, that in a way the public can understand that what's being paid for and what's not, what's being proposed to be paid for and what's not, and what, and what criteria is applied to what. So, that's going to have to be part of the work that we do to talk to people. Okay, Betty, you're next.
Good presentation, very clear, and great work. I, I don't know of anything that's pleased more people than this, than the street work in the last few years has. All sorts of people tell me they like it, and they, so I think it will be easy to get another bond measure passed to continue the work. One good thing about this is that the people get to vote on it, and I think that's, that they appreciate that. I hope that people can, if they see the lists of proposed streets, I assume that people can still suggest others. Is that correct? Different ones are...
From what's in front of you today?
Yes.
Yeah. By the time we get to a, a resolution in accordance with, with the way the '08 measure was put together, the list would be specific as to what goes out, but in the, in the interim, if, if you have ideas or suggestions as to what, how that model might be tweaked, that's, that's certainly appropriate. Beyond the measure, then adding or deleting projects all, all come back to the council.
And I am glad about the part about alternative modes. I was at a meeting last night at Hilliard Center about bike and pedestrians. Place was crowded, overflowing. There are lots and lots of people who are using bike paths and foot paths where they, where they exist, and lots more people who would like to if they feel it's safer, so I'm really glad to see an increase in that amount. Thank you.
Andrea, you're next.
Well, Mayor, you spoke to my concern in, in explaining about Seneca, and Kurt's explanation of it, you know, gives us a good platform. So, how do we, how do we, as councilors, encourage you to work on certain streets, Kurt?
Well, you send emails, and we look at them in the context of, you know, what, what is, you know, certainly a backlog of work that folks would like to have done on the unimproved network, since we're now investing a nominal amount, but we do also try to prioritize those.
So, is there a criteria for prioritization?
On the unimproved network? There is, yeah. I can't recite that for you.
Is there a list? I mean, could I get the list if I sent you an email to remind you?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Because I really feel like, especially in the areas that I represent, there's lots of unimproved streets that have never been improved, and we'll never, and they, people don't want them improved. They don't want to do an LID. You know, they're dead-end streets, and so it doesn't make sense that we encourage them to do that, or to put funds towards that, so I just want to make sure that we do that. And I do, and I also have to agree with Counselor Taylor. This is, this is good work. I really appreciate the work that the committee has done. So, I guess my next question, I guess my next comment would be that, you know, as we go into the next bond, I think it really needs to be street-specific. We need to lay those out again to make sure that we have the voter support that we did before, and, you know, that way we can get checked on it if we don't. So, thank you.
Alan.
So, I too would also like to thank the group that worked on it and came up with the good work. I think the bond worked really well. It did good work. We accomplished a lot. We made a lot of progress, and we kicked down the, the backlog quite a bit, but we're not there yet at all. And it's a good start, and it's nice to see progress, but it's insufficient. And when we were, looked at this before, we had a council committee on transportation funding, and we looked at over 30 different options for funding this. This was one of them. We eliminated most of them, but we also, in the end, crafted a compromise that had several components to it, one of which was the bond, but the other, there were other things included in it. And my top pick for that one was a street utility fee that was tied directly to transportation that had a nexus to how much you use the streets, and also had a nexus, and it captured all the people that use the streets, as opposed to a bond measure, which has no relationship at all to how much you use the street. It's related to how much your, your house costs and your property costs, and, and it only captures people within the city of Eugene. When we looked at that data, 50 percent of the people that use the streets in Eugene don't, are working Eugene, do not live in Eugene. So, those people are free riders, if you will, or, or free drivers, in this case, where they don't pay for the use and the deterioration of the streets. And to me, that was inequitable, so I supported a street utility fee that handled both of those inequities, where it was a nexus, and also the people who used it paid for it. So, I voted for a pack, that package, which included the bond measure, because it was a compromise. And as I've said many times, I would support the package as long as it moved forward with all the components to it. We have not made any progress towards the other parts of the, of the package. And, and, and we've talked about it, but we haven't done anything about the second part. So, as I've said before, I can't support another bond measure until we start working and make some progress on that particular part of the plan as well. So, until I see progress on that part, other than just promises to talk about it and discussions about it, I'm actually a no vote on this bond measure, because that was the package. I think that package was crafted well, and I want to see it. I'm hopeful that I can support this in the end, if we can actually make some progress towards moving on that, on that other part of the, of the, of the plan. So, in that spirit, I'd like to support this, and I'd like to make it as best as we can and position it as best as we can, but right now, I'm a no vote.
George Pauline.
I need a second round.
Well, I agree with Mayor. I think that we're going to have to very thoroughly explain the tax rate, the assessed value, and the, the cost of this to the voting public. Based on the estimates, it looks like an average increase over the expectancy of $18 from the start of this next five years, if this... So, you know, that, in the big picture, that's, you know, not really that much for better streets that we're starting to see. I also want to thank the street repair review panel for all the work they've done, not only coming up with this suggestion, but for reviewing all the construction work that's been going on in the past. It's a very valuable piece of the bond measure when it was first voted on, that, you know, the city be held accountable for, you know, the, the projects that were going. And I also agree that, you know, it needs to be pretty project-specific when we go out, if we go out to another bond, for another bond measure. So, there was an increase in the component from the bicycle pedestrian to 6 percent up from 3 percent. Is that it? Is that what it was before?
Yeah. The, the '08 measure did not have a, a percentage stipulated. It simply indicated $350,000 per year that, that equates to about 5 percent of the measure.
About 5 percent. So, it's, it is an increase, but as far as some of the funding and, you know, and everything tells us that more and more people are starting to use alternative modes of transportation, so to me, that makes sense to go ahead and increase that a little bit amount also. So, you know, I, I think we should go ahead and move forward with this, and, and like Betty says, you know, the good thing about it is the voters have the say on whether or not we go forward with another bond measure, and, you know, that's the ultimate, the ultimate decision-maker on this, on this, this project.
Pat, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it's, it's interesting to look at this, that with the same assessed, the same rate of .65, we'll get that much more money from the bond, and that's based upon the, the fact that assessed rates are, are going up significantly. Now, a question that will come up, as, as we ask people, if, indeed, we do ask people to, to support an extension of the bond or a new bond, is how do the assessed rates actually match the market rates? So, can you talk about assessed rates versus the actual real value of people's homes in the community, and what's happened to the real value of people's homes versus the assessed rates?
See if Sue can do that as well.
Yeah. So, as you recall, Measure 50, which was approved by the voters in 1998...
Did you say that one again?
You may be familiar with it. Anyway, that, um, set your market value and your assessed value at a different levels, and the market value for residential property is higher than the assessed value. So, as long as that condition stays the same, your assessed value can go up by 3 percent per year if you don't do anything to your house, don't make any improvements or whatever. So, I think for a lot of residential properties, that's probably what they've been seeing, is about a 3 percent increase per year. At the same time, your market value could be going up or down. If your market value goes down, your assessed value could still go up, which is, I think, what's happened and maybe has confused some people, is my house is not worth as much, but my assessed value has continued to go up.
And that is actually the nature of my question. You know, I've been around for Measure 5, and Measure 47, and 50. The mechanisms that are in place, I think we all, we all know about, but, but the question will come up. While my assessed rate has gone up, I can't sell my house for more, so I'm paying more, but I'm not getting more for the actual value of my house. The question will come up, and it's something that we need to be prepared for, that, that the real net worth of a family in terms of the property that they own has gone down, while their assessed rates and the actual tax bill has gone up. So, that, you know, that, as we've moved forward, it's not just a simple, well, you're still paying the same tax rate. You are actually paying more taxes in dollars, and your home is worth less in dollars, and that's a real, the real fact of the, of the matter. And I support going forward with a, with a bond. I believe that, you know, maintaining the, the truly excellent job that you and your staff and the teams have done in not only delivering what you've said you deliver, but given much, much more beyond what you said you deliver, I think we can, we can easily convince people that we're getting the best value for the dollar that they could possibly expect, but we have to be prepared for the fact that people's real value, their real net worth, has gone down while their tax bill has gone up.
Chris?
Thank you. Good work. Committee did a fabulous job, and one of the first things that occurs to me when you talk about the rate and the amount is, one of those criteria people use when they judge whether they're going to vote for something or not, is are you asking for what you really need, or are you asking for what you think you can get? And I think we need to be able to remain grounded in, the need is much greater than $43 million, so it's not like we are asking for more than we need. We're actually asking for a fraction of what we really need, but the next criteria is, do you really need this amount of money to deal with those most, those streets most in need of the help? And I would say, still, that is true. At $43 million, there, that is still addressing the most egregious needs for streets. So, the rate, the amount, whatever, I think the key point is, we're not asking for more than we need. We're asking for the minimum amount that we need in order to still be able to, to get, to keep that, those lines going the direction we want them to go. Second point is, and I, I'm supportive of the bond measure, and having, and I think it's important that when we look at what streets to be fixed, I think it's important to have input from folks to say, here's the street I think it ought to be here, and I think the city councilor should have just as much input as any member of the community in terms of what they think those streets should be. And I want to make sure that's balanced with your professional expertise in evaluating streets, because I don't want, I don't think this was what would happen, but I don't want it to become, streets are selected for preferential reasons as opposed to real maintenance and structural reasons. I think we all want them to be selected because of their real need and not because of, of some other criteria that really isn't applicable to the actual condition of the street. I don't think that would happen, but I just want to say that. The last thing is, I, when I served on the committee with Allen, and we looked at the, at the funding options, we came back with a package of five potential options, of which what he, the, the fee he talked about was one of them. And I, and I'm supportive of that. I was supportive at the time. What has complicated the conversation for me, though, is that in the intervening time, a number of other needs have come up, which could also fall within the purview of that kind of a fee. I just gave a presentation last month on, on just one of them. So, while I agree with Allen, we need to have that conversation about what that might look like. For me, it's a more complicated conversation in that it can't be just purely about streets, or just purely about human services, or just purely about public safety. It needs to be a conversation that looks at, what are we really talking about here? Because I know if you start cobbling these things together and taking them out to the public, you encounter enormous resistance, because once again, it looks like we're, we're asking for what we think we can get rather than what we think we need. Because that's a complicated conversation, I don't want to hold up the bond measure, but I do want, in good faith, to say, we will continue to have that conversation. It needs to be had. We need to look at what those options are. It's what the committee recommended, and I, I want to have that conversation, but in the new context, I think it's important to have.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Kurt, good job. Congratulations to you, to your staff, to the review panel, and everybody who's, who's been involved in both the previous '08 bond process and this, this development... been involved in both the previous '08 bond process and this, this development of this as well. I was one of those who thought, when the committee made their original presentation, that we ought to go at the whole problem and look at the long-term bond and try and create a, a solution that was longer term for a bigger dollar amount. Was convinced by the, by the committee and by other of my colleagues that looking at this in, in sections was a wiser way to go, as we did, than looking at, okay, well, we'll try this first and we'll see how it works, and then we'll come back again for the other part. And I think that was the right way to go. And I think that time and your efforts have proven that we did, the city did what they said they were going to do. They did a good job, and they've built some faith, and they've built some trust with this. And I'm absolutely in favor of, of going out now again with the new one. I think that voters can see easily that we did what we said we would do, we did it well, and we built faith in the process. So I think that's good on, on you and the staff and on, as I said, on the volunteers as well. One of the other things, though, that I'd like to see is that, I've asked a couple of times now, and I think you mentioned that your staff's been working on this, for more of a comprehensive plan with regard to unimproved street network. I don't know if that's already been done or not, but I, if it, if it has been, I, like Andrea, I have a lot of streets in my ward that are unimproved. I'd like to see that, if it has been done. If not, I'd, I'd love to see more of a, a master plan or a comprehensive plan at the staff level for how we address that and maybe even brought to council, because that, for me, is our next step. That's the logical next step beyond trying to tackle this, this backlog is, what do we do with the unimproved street network? You know? So I'd like to see that. Thanks.
Alan and George Paul are in the next round, and then I'm going to ask George Brown to put the motion on the table. Now, I just wanted to make one comment, that I think one of the most winning things that we did with this last time was to really try not to be arbitrary, but to try to be very balanced in our approach and having something that people could readily see happening in every neighborhood in the, in the community. And that's, that's a big selling point, so I hope we remain true to that. And I know that's what you've got here for us right now. Okay, Alan and then George.
Yeah, I, I agree. That's why I pushed hard for it to be a, last time to be a shorter one, a five-year bond with very specifically named streets that were geographically spread around the city so everybody sees the benefit. And, and that we had a review panel that looked at it and reported back. And I think, Mike, you hit it right on the, the nail on the head when you said, we built trust and we did what we said we were going to do, and we did it really well. And I think it was very successful. And I think having the same tax rate is, is a good place to start. I'd also like to, do we know if we, what the tax rate and the amount would be if we kept the tax amount on average the same as the last time?
Well, I said, what, the, the group also did an analysis of, I don't, I don't know that it was that iteration, but it was what, I believe the analysis was what do the assessments look like based upon the same size of measure as the '08 measure? Is that correct?
Yeah, and we have, on attachment A, we have the list, so at about a $35 million measure, which is not exactly the same amount, but it's close to the same amount. You've got the tax rate of about 53 cents and the cost to the average home of about 104 over those five years. So.
So the average, though, for the original one was 109.
Mm-hmm.
So, so somewhere between.
It would, it would be.
35 and.
Yeah.
40. If we kept it at the same amount.
Well, if you kept, if you.
Yeah.
If you kept what at the same amount?
The, the cost of the average homeowner.
Oh, the 109. Yeah.
So it'd be somewhere, so like, maybe 36 million.
Maybe, somewhere in that range, yeah.
Can we get that number?
Mm-hmm.
And, and the, the part that was allocated for bikes and Peds, we didn't specifically do that. We actually did it a little differently. We said $350,000, and this ups it to a little over $500,000. But the percentage stays the same because we upped the amount, because we were able to do that because the assessed value went up. One of the issues we talked about when we saw, when we approved the bike and pedestrian master plan was we had this great list of projects, but we had absolutely no way to fund it. And some of those things could be funded by these. And I understand we haven't, aren't at the point where we have a party list of projects, but hopefully down the road, we can get there. And a lot of those projects can be, can be helped a lot by the, the money that's allocated for this, for bikes and Peds. You know, when we did that, that committee on transportation funding five years ago or so, what we were trying to do is trying to fix the problem. And we've done a little bit. We've kind of stemmed the bleeding, but we haven't fixed the patient at all. We still have $118 million in backlog, and we have really no plan to deal with the 75 million of unimproved streets, or give or take, right? And so we really don't have any way to deal with that. And in fact, if we go as we're going right now, we will never fix this problem. It'll just actually get worse. And so my intention with the committee work was to fix the problem. And so I'm willing to have a conversation about it in the broader context because things have changed, but as of right now, that's not even on the agenda. At a minimum, I think it needs to be on the agenda before we, before we vote on this again and, and start that conversation and in that context that you were talking about, Chris. So specifically on a, on a street, I see, and thank you for putting in 15th and 17th, especially 15th between Fair and Haggan. But there's another part of it that, because of the arena construction, we made the U of O only cover Villard between 15th and Franklin on the west side. The east side is completely trashed because the agreement with the U of O was they only had to go to the middle of the street. So that's a portion of, that, that block there is just completely trashed because of the heavy construction that went there, and it's just falling apart. And I would like to see that on there.
George Paul.
Well, I, just one other point I want to bring out, and that is, when talking to the public about this, you know, I've answered this question many times, and Kurt, you know, I've referred to a lot of people, people's emails to you, is the difference between reconstruction versus overlay and why certain streets that appear to be in good shape are getting reconstructed instead of just an overlay. So I think that's another key, important thing that we need to, to get out to the public so that they're aware. And, you know, it's been done over and over and over again, but I keep getting the same questions. So we've got to continually keep up with that education. And I think it's, it's kind of a good time to be talking about this now, and this is not a coincidence, I'm sure, because, you know, Leroy Jethro Gibbs has 51 rules, and one of them is, there is no such thing as a coincidence. But it's interesting that we're talking about this now because, you know, this is the start of the construction season in that we're, you know, we're starting our, you know, our yearly work on our city streets, and it's, it's already obvious in my neighborhood that, that it's underway. So it is, it's a very good time for this to be brought up to the table.
George Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm, I'm going to make the motion in a second, but I just, I just kind of wanted to go over something for, for all of us to think about before we vote on that. And I'm just, you know, we all agreed, we're all comfortable with the bond amount being 43 million. As I recall, the, the suggestion by the consultant that the city used years ago was to, to split it in half. I think it was around $70 million at the time. And so I see we're increasing that, and with, with a worthy goal is to keep the tax rate the same, which is 65 cents per thousand. But, you know, everyone's going to be paying a lot more through, through time, and that's, that's a concern of mine, because all the other, all the other rates have gone up too, the sewer rates, and, you know, everything is, has been raising. So I'm just wondering if, is there any, has anyone thought about limiting the bond power amount to 35 million rather than, which would, you know, the tax rate would go down, but of course it would increase through the years, but the cost would be closer to what people are paying now. I'm, I'm personally happy to pay more, but I'm just trying to think of all, everybody all through town. I'm thinking might have a hard, there could be some people that are going to have a hard time paying this. So I, that, that's my concern. So I guess maybe I just solicit reviews from local councils. Me personally, I'm, I'm perfectly happy with this, but I, I think that there might be a lot of people who would rather see us stick close to the, the, the original suggestion from the consultant, which is let's just split it in half, demonstrate competence the first four years, or the first five years, which public works has done above and beyond, and even figuring out ways to reuse some of the material that normally would have been hauled away and incorporate that in the new surface. And we're actually able to do a lot more work with the amount of money. So that's, that's just a thought I have, and I don't really know. I'm, I'm perfectly willing to vote yes on this, but I just wonder if other people have any.
Well, I think that you put it out there, and I, Alan kind of asked sort of a similar question. And so I think, as you all think about it, and be careful when it comes back to us again, you can.
Maybe we, I'll, I'll go ahead and read the original motion, but maybe we can think about it between now and then, and we, we might want to change the rate or not. Okay. I guess I'll go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
All right, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move to direct the city manager to bring a resolution placing a $43 million general obligation bond measure to fix the streets on the November 2012 ballot, consistent with the proposed project list included as attachment deed.
Second and speak to the motion, please.
Thank you. In, in response to what the, the very legitimate concern that Council Brown brings up, by increasing it to 43 million, it works out to be about a buck fifty a month per average household, which is about half the price of a cup of coffee. That being said, I do listen very intently when Council Taylor talks about $1.50 sometimes being enough to put people out of a home. So, you know, we have to, we have to take it very, very seriously as we, as we do increase people's rates of taxes and, and what the net effect is on, on people's ability to maintain a dwelling. But a buck fifty a month is, like I say, half a, half a cup of coffee. And, and this is a, this is a good measure, and Kurt, you have demonstrated an excellent ability to make use of every single penny of the.
Hasn't been me. Big team effort, but I appreciate the comment.
I, I trust that, and I can articulate that trust to anybody who asked me the question. So that being said, I'm curious to hear more from Council Zelenka as we move forward with this regarding why he's not going to support it unless we look at having people outside the city pay some of the taxes to him. Thank you.
I would just say that I think, one is that I, I don't feel there's an unreasonableness about this. I just think what you're looking at and what we all need to look at is what we think is the most likely to get the support of, of the voters. And that's what you need to be thinking about as you make the decision about whether it's this or keeping it at the same number. So it's just something for you guys to be thinking of. Yes, Alan?
Yeah, I just did some, well, real quick calculations. If you, if you kept the average, the, the rate would be 55.64, the average $109, and the amount would go up to 36.6 million. But that's a funky number because the, the average cost of the home went up every single year. Started at 98, went up to 121 just because of the assessed value going up. So if you kept it at the last one we had, so it was no, if you said no more increase than the last time we did this bond at $121, then, then it's just a little over $40 million that we'd have instead of 43. So it'd be no, you could say no increase in your, in your average amount to the taxpayer.
All right, we ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor, and opposition?
No, for the reasons stated.
One in opposition, it passes.
Hope to support later.
Thank you, Kurt. Thank you to the committee. Appreciate it very much. We're going to move on to our next item on our agenda. It's a very interesting topic on capital project funding for Washington Jefferson Park.
Neil, the old one will be coming up to make the presentation.
It's 51.
Thank you.
Nice tie, Neil.
All in green. Dude, he's working on a skate park. It's an invisible tie.
Yeah, you're way overdressed for a skate park conversation.
Well, I'm next to all these people who are well dressed, so I couldn't.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. So I don't really have a presentation. I know this is a, this is a work session that the council asked for to discuss funding for the city center skate park in Washington Jefferson Park. I'll just give a couple of sentences of background for folks who may be listening who don't know that background. The city center skate park, which has been called in lots of our other documents, has other names, but is, has been proposed for Washington Jefferson Park to be built under the cover of where the Washington Jefferson Bridge goes over the park. From, from the beginning, pretty much, the idea to fund the construction of the skate park was a public-private partnership with the city contributing $292,000 from Park SDC funding and for the remainder of the construction costs to be paid for by private fundraising. We've had two great partners on this project, Rotary, Eugene Rotary, and Skaters for Eugene Skate Parks. They worked very hard over a couple of years, found the fundraising a very hard go in this economy, didn't meet the, the goals or the amounts that were needed to pay for the skate park. We did the design process. We have a design, a final design with four phases. The total cost of that four-phase skate park would be a little under $900,000. It got a little bigger through the design process than was originally anticipated. And now the, our partners are asking the city to look at kicking in additional capital funding for the construction, and the council is asked to have a work session to discuss using 2006 park recreation and open space bond funding to cover the additional capital costs of construction.
Thank you for that. And I have Andrea, and Mike and Andrea in the queue. Mike first, but I'm going to, I just want to make a couple of comments to start out with. I think when the public listens to us talk about this, they have to somehow say, with all the other needs that are basic and essential, why are we talking about pursuing a skate park at this time? And I would just like to say that, from my perspective, I've thought about this a lot. We have renewed interest from our partnership and some solutions, possible solutions for ongoing maintenance that weren't there before. So that's a, that's one piece. We have a lot of community interest. We've heard recently from Travel Lane, from the business community, from the skaters, from the Rotary. So there's lots of interest right now. And there's a compelling need for the parkland recovery in that area to be used in a more positive way, safety for the entire community and nearby Whittaker neighborhood. And that, by the way, the nearby Whittaker neighborhood is experiencing a great economic step forward, and so this is right next to it. And then there's a compelling need for activity for youth. And I just think when we're out here talking about how to prevent gang activity, when we're trying to have positive activity going instead of negative activity, it fits into many other things we're talking about trying to meet the needs of right now. And then the other piece is something that we have in our regional prosperity plan and all of that, is trying to find ways to give us an economic boost. And this comes to us as a way to give an economic boost in a city that claims to be a great city for the arts and outdoors. So for all of those reasons, and that's what I want the public to hear, if we're considering this, it's for a whole list of good reasons that meet many goals that may not be obvious on the surface, but can really make a difference for our community. And so I think it merits a really good discussion about whether we move forward or not. So with that, I'll let Mike speak, and then Andrea, and then George, and then Pat.
Thank you, Mayor. The Mayor made a lot of the points that I wanted to make initially there. I think I, I agree with a great percentage of what she said. I think it's important for the public to understand something else, too, because I've been one who's advocated a little bit from time to time for public safety-related things and been someone who's talked about the county's predicament and the number of jail beds we don't have, and you see these things in the newspaper and you see them on TV all the time about the lack of funding. So where in the world do we get the money to be able to do something like this? Well, for the general public to understand this, it's a bond fund that we said, this is what we want to sell these bonds for, to do park-related things with this money. We did it in '06. And much like we did with the road fund, we, we went out with it and we did what we said we would do with the money. We did it well, and we kept to our word. It's a similar thing here. These bonds were sold for the purposes of enhancing our parks. We can't take that money and use it for other stuff now because it's not legal to do so for one, but it's also not right. So in the process of having that money to enhance our parks, the question then isn't, are there other needs? The question is, what's the best sort of things we could do in park-related activities with that money? I tend to support this pretty strongly. I, I do want to hear from the manager that no part of the bond monies that. I do want to hear from the manager that no part of the bond monies that will be set aside for the Santa Clara Community Park will be used for this. I want to hear that one more time as a reassurance for the folks out there. But aside from that, I generally am in support, as the father of a 12-year-old son who can't get enough skateboarding and BMX biking and, and more than anything else scootering these days. I have to tell you, I understand where the culture has changed with this. This sort of activity used to be for, at least from an old guy's perspective, for a segment of the community. It's very different now. It's a, it's very widespread. It's very popular with younger guys who are into a lot of things and, you know, they might be straight A students that are into music and stuff, but they dig scootering, too. So, it's, it's a thing that, that I think has an appeal for a wide cross-section of our community and I'm certainly in favor of it. I would ask, though, from the design perspective, I've seen, as I said, from my personal experience, kind of a shift to some degree from an emphasis on skateboarding to the, to the popularity of scooters these days coming out as something that we do. And I know that, that necessitates a little bit of a design difference and I wonder if you might speak to that or if there's anybody who's talked about that regarding this project.
Not, not in any detail, although throughout the design process, we did look at both strictly skating uses, but also whether other wheeled vehicles, bikes and trick bikes and those kinds of things and how those other kinds of uses of a skate park would fit into the design. And it's designed to accommodate a range of users, a range of types of skating, a range of skill levels and that kind of thing. So, there's a variety built into this four-phase design.
I actually asked my son about this. I said, you know, what, what sort of stuff would be cool to have with scooters that doesn't have with skate? He said, well, less half-pipes and more street-related, you know, and he gave me some good advice on this. So, happy to meet with you later if you like.
Okay.
I'd love to
Play with your son.
Yeah, yeah, all right. He's, he's actually a much better authority on this than I. Boy, I tell you what these guys do these days with these things, too. It's unbelievable. Manager, I'd love to hear, like I said, the, some assurance that this doesn't come from the Santa Clara Community Park.
I'm going to say a couple of things and Neil will have to talk specifically to that. He knows the detail. And I would say this eventually, but our hope today is that we get a sense of direction from the council on whether or not you're interested in pursuing the skate park, not a specific funding source. Because as you know, from the memo that the city attorney provided for us, there are some concerns about using the park bond for that. The other piece that we do want to be able to come back and have the conversation about is the ongoing maintenance of the park and that is part of that complete conversation. So, for us today is to get a sense of
That's awesome. I'm sorry.
It says in the memo, "A community park in Santa Clark." That's a Freudian slip.
I guess the answer is yes.
You have your own partner table, Mike?
Sure. That you brought this up to me multiple times.
Sorry, no, just
Johnny, I'll just wrap up real quick.
For our, from our perspective, it's really, today is more about your interest in pursuing the park or the skate park rather than specific funding sources because I think there has to be a little bit more conversation around that.
So, that's a no.
Well, Alan, Andrea, you're next, so now you've shared.
Oh, my goodness. Mike, that is awesome. That is so awesome.
I have a copy of that framed.
You should, you should.
If you did, I hope you would.
Thank you, John, for your opinion and your comments regarding what your direction you're looking for. Me personally, I appreciate Glenn's and I usually believe him and follow him, you know, very closely in whatever recommendations he's given the council, but I think this one is one that I'd be willing to take a different bend to. I think that when, it's my understanding that in 2004, when Mayor Torrey had started this, worked with a community group to start this process, there was quite a bit of community support at the time. It didn't make it onto the pros plan, but I believe that if it had, it would definitely have been a part of this. And granted, you know, that's like hindsight, but I do think that it's very well received in the community. So, Neil, I just wanted to ask you, you put the price tag now at $900,000. Is that including the $250,000 for the bathrooms?
No, that is just for construction of the skate park itself.
Even in the climate today that everything is coming in under, under cost?
Well, this is, this is an estimate. So, the, the design firm that we hired was tasked with developing an engineering estimate and the costs of the work in the park, the infrastructure and landscaping around the skate park, which we estimated the cost of, plus the cost of construction, was their estimate and the total was $892,000.
When did this come, I mean, because this is the first time I've heard that, that dollar amount. It's been $600,000 the whole time?
A few months ago. Some of the SES folks might remember when that number came out better than I do. I think it's within the last six months.
Okay, okay, because this is the first time I've heard that, that comment. I just want to, for the community out, out there on TV land, we have quite a few of the SES folks here in the audience who actually, and a couple of people from Rotary. So, I am going to, when the, when the
You want, pass if we can answer that.
It's, it's the mayor's show. So, it's still my time. So, I, when the motion gets put on the table, I'm going to change the motion because I really don't think, John, that it would be fair to go looking at other, like funding this against other projects and pulling money from them. I think that this is, the parks' money should be used for this. This is a park. This is an improvement of a park. I guess the question I would have is wanting to know how much money is left in it, in the parks, parks bond. There's a project list that we had here with our stuff back in the day. And one of the things that I noticed was the West Eugene Wetland Education Center had $1.75 million attached to it and I know that we haven't done anything out in that area. So, I'd be interested to know where that money's coming from and coming, where the, where that money is or if it's been utilized. And just kind of know how much is left in that bond and if this $900,000 is undesigned in that bond.
I can give you rough figures.
No, I mean, that's what I'll want to know.
Okay, later.
Right, great. So, we can do the Santa Clark park.
Okay, George Poling.
Santa Clark Park.
Well, I'm very supportive of the skate park on, on various levels. One, it will be a huge economic driver to our community. Being on the board of Travel Lane County, we've had discussions about this many times and, and it is, you know, it's a very positive thing. Also, in my younger days, one of the first concussions I suffered growing up was from riding a skateboard and that's when you tore apart the old metal skates and tacked them to a two-by-four. And our biggest thrill was getting about a 50-foot rope on a bicycle and the three of us hanging on the back end and down the hill we went. So, you know, back, back in the old days when I used to do the skateboarding and the surfing thing, it was, it was, it was a lot of fun and it got me outside, got me away from schoolwork and something to do. So, you know, my, my biggest concern and Andrea, I'm having a little heartburn with this, is because of the ruling that we did get from, from Glenn, but we also have been hearing from the public and some very, some people that are very involved in the bond measure when it went out, the park bond measure, and they are starting to say it was their opinion that it would be okay for us to use this. So, I don't know what your motion is going to be, but I think it deserves a little more in-depth discussion about whether or not we can use this park bond money or not because if we can, I'd be in favor of it, of using it, just as long as the park in Santa Clark won't be damaged any. But, yeah, I, I think it's, it's great for the community. It's great for the young people and, and the old people, older people. You won't see me on a skateboard anymore. I, I learn the hard way, so, but I encourage
You just wear a helmet, though, right?
Yeah, yeah. We didn't have helmets back then. So, I hope we can move forward on this in one way or another.
Thank you, George. Pat, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there are three elements in my mind. There's the concept, the benefit and the funding mechanism. And the concept, it seems that you have pretty well down as far as how to build the park and how to accommodate the various types of wheels that may use the park. And the, the location, according to the concept, is, is ideal, you know, an all, a year-round skate park. It's very intriguing. You know, we have the skate park in Bethel RT, I mean Bethel Danabo.
Thank you for recognizing.
That is, that is very functional, obviously, and it's used by multiple sets, multiple types of wheels. So, I believe the concept and design is, is well taken care of. Now, the benefit, we've talked about that a little bit around the table and, you know, kids today are a little bit different than when, when I was going to school in that there are, you know, things that occupy kids' minds that, that don't involve using their legs and arms. So, the more that we can put out in front of them, the more options that they have for an impromptu exercise program. Team sports are one thing, but it takes a little bit of organization and some kids just simply aren't into team sports. You know, skating and riding and getting out in the fresh air year-round as this park would provide, you know, the, the benefit is obvious. And if you, if you talk to the people at Lane Coalition for Active Healthy Youth, they want, they talk about teen obesity and the, and the benefits of burning calories, just burning calories. And that's, you know, what better way to burn calories than to have fun doing so? And I think the, the benefit is clear and I don't, it's very difficult to disagree with the fact that kids need to exercise and more. Now, the funding mechanism, I think the, the manager and I spoke a little bit about this yesterday and, and the motion that I believe we're going to be putting forward is to bring information on alternate funding methods, the park bond being one of them and the, and other, other ways to fund the park being other or combinations thereof. I think as far as the park bond is concerned, I think if you look at the nature of parks, it's a very dynamic situation in Eugene, changing continually. And our acquisition of parks and enhancement has, has been a dynamic endeavor all along, adjusting for whatever new things come on the radar screen. And I think the Parks Department, Johnny Medlin, who's due to retire very, very soon, I understand.
Short timer.
And, and the entire staff has done a very good job of making sure that we, we focus our attention directly on the parks that we are able to, to enhance and provide and also parkland acquisition. I think this fits into that dynamic field and I think it would be very easy to defend personally, I'm not an attorney, but personally, that we could defend spending park bond money on this. But I'm looking forward to seeing what the options are that the manager brings forward. Thank you for all the work on this and thank you very much to the people at Delta Rotary and, and all, all the others who are sitting in the room who really want this thing to happen and who have made it so that everybody else wants it to happen, too.
George Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I'm not, I've got a list of questions. I just kind of like to make a comment about the, the possible use of the park bond funds. I, you know, I'm not convinced that that's, I think we could use that source because I, you know, you read from the ballot measure, it says if approved, the proceeds from the sale of bonds will be used for costs related to the purchase of land for parks and open space and the construction and improvement of park facilities. Projects anticipated to receive funding through the bonds include, and that's a specific list, but it says include. And when I see that, I go, I see a pair of parentheses, but not limited by the list that's, you know, included in. So, I, I think it's open and I, I think we could use, use some of those funds for a skateboard park. It's, it's just important for so many people. It would really be a, a huge enhancement of, of that park and I think it'd be a really good start to town to have a nice facility like that. So, some of my questions were the same as Council Artes. I'm wondering how much is left of the 27 and a half million bonding authority? You know, it might be nice just to see a, for the, for the next time we bring this up, just kind of a, a list of how it's been spent so far, just the whole thing, because I'm a little mushy in my memory of what, what's been pulled out for what project. And I'm also wondering how much private funding has been raised or at least pledged. It's probably not in an escrow account or anything, but I'm sure that some people have stepped up and said, well, I'll put in this X amount of dollars and I'll put in X. And, and I'm wondering, I see the city share under that plan was, the original plan was for $292,000 and then the rest to be raised privately. So, do we still have that 292,000? Is that available for this project?
I can give you a couple of quick answers on a couple of those. So, Skaters for Eugene Skate Parks and the Rotary combined have raised around 90,000. And yes, the original allocation of Park SDC funding is still there. We spent some of it for the design process and the balance is still there for this project.
Thank you. And then I just have a, you know, maybe I should, I haven't really looked at the, looked at the plan myself, so maybe I think I need to do that, but when you mentioned that it would be, the idea now is to phase it into four phases. I'm wondering if, if even if the full 800,000 can't be raised, perhaps maybe we could do some of the phases and, and still have it be a useful amenity. They can do phase one and phase two or maybe if we could see like how much it would cost to do each phase and what the potential timing of those are to give us some idea of, well, maybe we won't do the best plan, but we can still do something decent for less money, something like that.
I want to clarify because I think there might be a little confusion around some of the numbers. So, the 892 is the total cost. 600,000 is the balance that we still need to come up with around six. I'm using rough numbers here. So, we're not looking for eight or 900,000, we're looking for 600,000. The 292, as I just said, is still there. That goes against
The design fee, though.
Yeah.
So, that was probably what, 150?
Don't have those numbers on the top of my head.
Okay, but yeah, thank you. But if we could just have some of that, you know, like for next time we discuss this, that'd be great, with the balance of the whole park fund.
Yes.
And does it, I mean, could we do a phased approach and
Thanks, George.
Like that, so, thank you.
Alan?
I, too, as a former skateboarder, my first skateboarder was taking my old skates and banging them two-by-four because we didn't have a lot of money. I finally got a skateboard, that was really fun. I, I really support this. I think it's a good idea as well. Mike talked to the cultural shift. That's really abundantly clear, just in the last, since 2006 even. I fly a lot and when I see youth come onboard, their carry-on is a skateboard. That's what they have the most important thing of them. So, you know, it's, it's a competitive sport now and it's a wholly different world. And I agree that it's a great opportunity for kids to get active and be out into, into the fresh air and be year-round because it is underneath the Washington Jefferson Bridge, so it'll be covered, so that would be great. I think that we should look at all of the funding options. I'm not decided yet, but when I, so, when I look at what was on the original ballot measure, it said that these would be used for construction improvement of park facilities, projects anticipated to receive funding, and then it had the specific list. So, to me, that meant, I could interpret that easily to mean that those are the ones that we could thought of now that we anticipated, but there may be others that will come along the line. And so I think that might be something to, I think it's a political decision whether or not we want to do that. There's a risk associated with it, but I think that's one of the things that we should look at. So, I'm willing to look at all of them. I'm also interested in the idea of the bathrooms and how that might play out. I think when we come to the suggested motions, the way this is structured is taking into consideration the city attorney's opinion. If we just moved to direct staff to bring information on funding options and delete the word alternative, I think we can get all of what we, that would include the park bond.
Chris, since everybody's been really clear about that, so I don't think any, who's in the van? Chris, you're next.
Thank you. My dad's first name was Eugene. Can I have the whole city?
Yes.
I was going to say, you put on a helmet and call that what happens. You, without a helmet, you become a city councilor.
Right, so, wear your helmet.
I am, I am fully supportive of, of proceeding with this motion as it's currently stated, but I would probably resist modifying it to add the bond measure because I do have concerns, just as Glenn said about it. And the reason being, I remember when this first came up on the city council and those of us that were here hopefully remember that at the time, what was brought forward by staff was a bond measure that was half maintenance and development and construction and half acquisition. And if you review the minutes, this council explicitly said, no, we want this to be for acquisition only, period. That was the ship that sailed. Now, this is, this was modified to add the development of the athletic fields and the Golden Gardens Park, like boats hanging off the side, but it was not part of the original discussion. So, I'm concerned that if people wanted to go back to that record, we didn't talk about development and we didn't talk about construction. We talked about only acquisition. And the part that says that we added that talks about, and construction and improvement of park facilities, that was specifically for the Golden Gardens Park and the synthetic fields and the education center. It was not for the main part of the bond. So, my concern is we're trying to reinterpret what this council was very explicit about back then and I don't want to get in trouble or run afoul with that. So, if you want to continue to look at it, maybe get an opinion, that's great, but I don't want to modify this proposal to, to expose don't want to modify this proposal to expose us right now. So we can still talk about that, but I don't want to take that risk right now. And I think, I think we need to be very careful to make sure that what mechanism we comes up with is a sustainable one. I agree, you build it, you also have to maintain it. You don't want to make a commitment to something that you're not going to stand behind over the years. I've been involved in the development of skate park, the one at Willamille Lane Park, worked with the Tony Hawk Foundation, brought him out here, he had a family member that lives here in town. And it's a tremendous, tremendous asset. When you build something like that, it's really a great thing. I want to proceed, though, in a way that doesn't wind up putting us in a bind later on, because I don't want, you know, it was like going to the bank to borrow money for a car, and then later on, you decide you want to buy a boat because you really want a boat. Okay, maybe you needed a boat, but the bank's going to be kind of unhappy that you didn't use it for the original purpose, and the contract's a contract. So as much as I would love to use these bond measure proceeds to buy a skate park, I want to make sure that that's not running afoul of what the original contract said.
Ann Betty?
Okay, I agree with what, a lot of what Chris has said. I remember clearly that we said this was for acquisition, and a couple of things were added because some people thought that would help to pass it, but the idea was that we needed to acquire lands, that that's something you can't do later on because the land won't be there, and other improvements can happen at a later date. And the part about it could be used for these things and possible others meant possible other lands, because we didn't want to limit it to, you could only buy this land, what, the land that seems available and valuable could be purchased with it. But it definitely was for acquisition, and I would oppose doing it another way. If we want to, and if we could use money for a skate park, we could also use it for Civic Stadium, probably. But there are many other things we could use money for, and I think we should consider them in comparison with others. For example, Tugman Park has, the neighbors of Tugman Park have wanted a water feature there for years and have been told it's too expensive, and I assume that there are other places that want things, too. But mainly, I would oppose using the money that was for acquisition for anything else. Thank you.
Alan, next round?
Okay, go ahead, Alan.
So, I think by deleting the word "alternative," what it does is allows us to look at but not commit to the park bond. So in no way am I saying that we should commit to that path of using the park bonds, but I'd like to take another look at it and see, and, you know, and get more information like what you just said and Betty just said, I think that's important. But I'd still like to look at it, it's one of the options, we'd have multiple options to look at, I'm sure. The other point that I wanted to make was that every time we add something to the park inventory, we exacerbate an ongoing problem that we were talking about before, which is all these other funding needs that we have. And one of the things that was, that is important, and we talked about before, I brought up a work session on this at the council level, to talk about the O&M budget for parks and rec, and the development budget for parks and rec. We've got all this land that we acquired, but we can't do anything with it, and at the same time, we've got a, and the AIS has a gap of more than $1.7 million in O&M funding, so we're not able to fully fund just the regular O&M of our parks. So that, part of that conversation I hope we have before we vote on the GO bonds for the, for the road funds, but it's just an ongoing problem that we have with, and we need to be cognizant of that when we add new assets. Of course, this one will be brand new, so it won't have a lot of immediate impact on the O&M for the, for the near future, like five years, but it'll, it'll add to that gap that we don't have a plan to solve.
And Andrea, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, you were first.
So, it's okay. So a couple things. How, so Neil, when you bring this back to us, can you please share with us how much land we've purchased, and if there is even capacity for us to spend all the money in the next five to 10 years acquiring parkland in the, in our city limits? Because this is for land that is part of our city limits, not just anywhere. So that's where the money needs to get spent. So I would appreciate if we get that report. And I just kind of want to speak to the maintenance of this. It's my understanding that the Skaters of Eugene have come up with a plan that involves one of their partners, which is Kid Sports, in looking at a different way of maintaining this facility. So I don't think that that is as much of an issue as using the parks' bond. And I also remember the conversation that we had about acquisition, and there was one counselor who was very clear on that, that got, that was more intent on acquisition than the rest of us, and, you know, looking at that bridge of trying to get to yes, I think a lot of us accepted it, and that's, but we did the, what you said on either side, we got stuff for Golden Gardens, and we got the synthetic athletic fields, but there was, there was a lot of conversation about it. I mean, but it wasn't, it was one of those things where it was, okay, I can live with this, but not to say that that's not what we went out to the voters with, I agree with that, but I think that this falls in with, in the footprint of what we went to the voters with. I only want to look at using park bonds. Personally, I think that, you know, everybody in this budget times to go and say, Chief Grove's give me some money, Chief Kern's give me some money, you know, to pull money from other parks, when this is actually sitting here, and this is what this is for, I think is challenging for me, but I would be willing to have that conversation further. And so that's kind of where I'm at. If we can get the motion, I want to start my consent.
I just wanted to echo something that Andrea just said, because it's going to be a part of our future conversation, just so you know where I stand, even though I'm a fairly decent-sized cheerleader for this as a project. And when we're talking about money sources that could be general obligation in any sense or that could be used for other priorities, that's a whole different matter for me, absolutely different matter. So that should be a clear part of our next conversation.
I'm going to call on Chris and then George Brown, but I would just say that I think we're in a much better position in this conversation if we talk about what we're trying, why we think this is important and what we want to achieve as opposed to what we might take away from something else. So I do think we're in a whole different conversation. Chris, and then George.
Yeah, just quickly, I understand it's very frustrating when you have money sitting in account that you, that you can't use for whatever reason, and you, and you have other needs that you would love to use it for. I can recall when Katrina struck, they raised millions and millions of dollars for aid to New Orleans, and that money, that's over, it's gone, but there's still millions of dollars sitting in a Katrina aid account that cannot be used for any other hurricane, cannot be used for any other disaster. People can die in Texas, and that money will have to sit in that Katrina account because it was specifically designated for assistance to victims of Katrina. And so you need to be very aware when you designate money, that you have to provide in that designation the capability of being able to be flexible with it. We didn't do that. We were very specific, and I think that was a challenge, and like you, I was not supportive at the time of being that tight and that specific, but I think for the purposes of what people vote for, that was what we felt we needed to do. I think that's put us in a dilemma, in that we now have money sitting in the bank, and we don't necessarily have the land. We would love to buy a Santa Clara Park once we define the land, Santa Clark Park, once we define the land. And we have money to spend, we need to find the place to spend it, but it's frustrating, and we see other needs, we know we have them, and we just, because the contract says it has to be for this purpose, we can't use it for some other. That's the only thing that's hanging me up, but the way it's crafted now, we can move forward, because I think this still gives us some latitude and some flexibility to even look at that.
George Brown, then we'll put the motion.
Okay, I just wanted to make a comment here. I was, you know, people were thinking about changing, wordsmithing the motion a little bit. I think, I've read it again two or three times, the way, the way I read it is, no, no funding source is left out of consideration here, including the parks. I mean, we can still discuss that. I don't see this, it says, you know, "Bring information on funding options back," it doesn't say excluding this, that, or the other. So just bring...
But is that what they interpret, though, is what I wanted?
And with alternative to what? So...
So city manager...
It doesn't say that.
City manager, what's it meant by that?
Really, the intent of it is to provide you back alternatives for funding it. The parks' bond is on the table, I know people have an interest in that, there's potentially some others. We will also want to come back on the maintenance side because we do have some concerns around that, so we'll bring back more conversation about that as well. So we've also heard the conversation, so we'll be inclusive, not exclusive. Okay. Well, I just wanted to mention that, because we want to make one last, you know, one last try at wordsmithing or changing it, but I can live with the way that it is because I don't see that it excludes discussion of the...
Can I put it out?
I will. I move to direct staff to bring information on alternative funding options back to the council for discussion and consideration, including description of the process needed to utilize each funding source addressed, timing implications for utilizing each funding source, funding implications for other projects resulting from utilizing each funding source, other impacts and considerations resulting from utilizing each funding source, strategy for operating the facility following construction, strategy for funding maintenance of the facility following construction.
Second.
Moved in seconded.
So, John, I'm not going to wordsmith this, even though I really, really, really want to, but I don't think I will out of...
Or T.I.S.
So what I want to hear from you is that you are going to consider using the 2006 PROS bond also in looking at funding for this?
Yes.
Okay. And that we are going to be working with the volunteers who've been working on this project to look at, they're going to be part of the conversation, we'll talk about maintenance and the whole project.
Yes, if they...
Inclusive, you were saying?
I haven't specifically seen their proposal, perhaps Neil has, but if they have ideas, all that will be a part of the conversation, and what the pros and cons of that may or may not be, we'll bring back to the council.
And then all the questions that we've asked you, we'll have answers to those. And can we get a timeline on that? Do you know, before, after break?
We'll just have to sit down and take a look at all the things we're trying to get done before break. I don't know the answer to that now, but we'll be able to put out that schedule and give you that.
All right. Okay, thank you.
As we think about this, it's not only how we talk about it, but it's how we really think about it. I'm hoping that we're going to think about how this addresses many goals that we have, and so as we think about budgeting for those goals and things that we're trying to achieve, that we think about how this might be part of addressing some of those very specific needs that we have already set we have for, for our community and fall into various different departments and so forth. So, I'm hoping that, yeah. All right, so, I think you're ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you all very much.
And I do have to say, the credit for the pun of the day goes to Glenn, right?
That's what I was saying.